Six o'clock and I promised Mr. Steinhardt we'd be.
September 5th, 2018, Wednesday, 6:00 PM, Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for September 5th, 2018. Chairman Dede cannot make it here tonight, so I'll be acting chair along with Mr. Moglen and Mr. Steinhardt is here. The first thing before we begin, I'd like to talk about Clayton A. Siegel, Sr., a former Park and Rec Commissioner. Besides from that, I think everybody knows Clayton from his work with the Crop Walk, his other work that he did down at the Methodist Church. I mean Clayton was one in a million. I got yelled at when I, once before called him my old boss. He is not my old boss. He told me he is my former boss. So he was a one heck of a guy as far as I'm concerned. So if we could have a moment of silence for Clayton. Thank you. I'd also like to ask everybody to think about the loss of Canine Officer Jacks and, you know, his handler. They did a lot for the, not just for the town of Southwick, but for the entire region. Very successful career and we lost a good canine. With that, we will go right into public comments. Is there anyone here that would like, who's not on the agenda, who would like to make any statement to the Select Board? I see none. So we're gonna go right to acknowledging payroll warrant 1-9-0-5 dated 8/27/18 in the amount of $66. Payables warrant 1-9-0-5B dated 8/27/18 in the amount of $299,733.65. And then I need a motion to accept the regular session minutes of 8/21/18.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Do we have any executive minutes?
No, there was no executive session.
No executive session. Alright, we have nothing on the agenda, so we're gonna go right to the action items. Doug, I think these are gonna be the newer ones that have been added, so. The first thing is an invitation from the Greens of Southwick. That's the new development going in at the former Southwick Country Club. It's gonna be held Saturday, September 8th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. And we got the notification from Kate Phelan, who is the Executive Director of the Westfield, Greater Westfield Chamber of Commerce. And Kate wants to keep us all involved here in Southwick, so if anybody can make it, they're welcome. Robin, you want me to pass these here?
I would like that, yes, thank you.
Okay. The next thing, very important, is the 9/11 Remembrance. It'll be held at the Fire Department as usual. It'll be Tuesday, September 11th at 9:50 AM. The Chief Speaker will be Chief Russ Anderson. We'll also have, be hearing from Chief Kevin Bishop. And then there'll be a short program as usual, and I would imagine refreshments. And we normally have a fairly good turnout of the public there. And I wanna emphasize, the public is invited. And if there's not enough parking at the Police Department, Fire Department, there's parking at the Congregational Church, then it's a short walk, but the public is definitely invited. Alright, next thing is to authorize, a motion to authorize the Chairman and CAO to set natural gas supplier contracts for town buildings.
Right, Mr. Chairman. We're coming off of a three-year deal, so now we're looking at the new, the new numbers through the Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative as our group purchasing facilitator.
Okay.
And we need to set those in the next couple of days.
I'll move to have the Chair sign.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Robin? Next thing I had, and I got a phone call on this. It's a short notice. It's a request for a one-day liquor license for Saturday, November 15th, from 12:00 to 10:00 PM at the American Legion. They're gonna be putting up a tent in the parking area for a funeral reception. And I told, this is the Vice Commander who called me. I told him to get down here immediately. And I guess he's already spoken to Lieutenant Landis.
I referred him to Kevin and the Lieutenant, and he met with the Lieutenant. And the Lieutenant has approved in the attached drawing sketch the Lieutenant has signed on.
Okay.
So the rest of the vote would be contingent on the Fire Chief and the Building Inspector approvals for the one-day license.
Right, and he was made aware of that, that is. Normally, it's a 30-day thing, but we understand because of the funeral, there's not much you can do. So I need a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Will you sign it? The next is a letter from Chief Russell Anderson, Fire Department. It's a request for several people to join as firefighters or EMTs, contingent upon, of course, successful background medical checks and passing orientation. And this was a review committee made up of our new Deputy Chief and fellow officers and are making this recommendation. I have John Kane firefighter, Keith Parent firefighter, Donald Elton Jr. firefighter, Dave Dubcek, EMTs, Stefan Bachmann, EMT, Pavel Gutt, EMT, Stephanie Costa, EMT, Scott St. Martin, EMT, Jacob Sanborn, EMT, Matthew Drennan, EMT.
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll sign it. And now we're on to our regular action folder, A1. And this is appointments, fiscal 2019 appointments. And the first thing on tap is Marcus Phelps for the 250th Anniversary Committee. I need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Alright, then I have Fire Department list. Is this the?
It's all set to do make, yep. Just approve it as listed.
You're right. I'm gonna do that rather than read off 100 names. So I'll take, accept a motion to approve the reappointments of the firefighter, EMT, firefighters, and just the EMT, career members, sports staff, fire safety, EMT, chief, et cetera.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Could I just sign it or?
I just, I don't think we need to.
Okay.
Yeah. Cause we'll be signing other things later. A2 is a letter from the Governor of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Charlie Baker, and Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito with congratulations. They're notifying us that we've been awarded a recycling dividends program grant of $6,000 through the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. And they want to thank us for our commitment to reducing waste and increasing recycling for the benefit of our community and the environment. And Randy, thank you for the hard work you do. Do you already have some plans for the $6,000?
Nope. It's gonna go in a little fund and we can use it if anything, we're ready to sell it with.
You got it. You got it.
If you have ideas, well, you know.
Did the contract come to you, Randy, or did?
I have it on my desk, yeah. Well, I'll bring it to you tomorrow.
So I need a motion to accept the grant.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I guess we'll sign this. Let me thank the Governor and Lieutenant Governor. A3 is a notice of public hearing. It's Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, 7:30 PM, land use hearing room here at Town Hall. And this is a notice by the Planning Board that they'll be holding a public hearing. And this is an application by Southwick Greenhouses, Inc. for special permits and site plan approval for property located at 27 Hudson Drive, zoned as industrial restricted. Property is shown on the current assessor's map, 67 parcel 007. Applicant proposes to grow cannabis in the greenhouse and attached buildings. Use will be dedicated to cultivation processing and packaging for wholesale distribution in accordance with the Code of Southwick zoning bylaws, Chapter 185, Sections 9, 10, 1922, and 35.2.
Mr. Chairman, this will be another entity that will have to have a host agreement with the town.
Okay.
And this is a formal application that's already been filed, whereas the other one that I brought to your attention a couple of weeks ago, they have not filed a formal application yet, and that is the one down near the Moore House.
Okay.
And so they're going into the Planning Board for an informal meeting.
Okay. So, Mr. Moglen, as our expert on this and having been on the Cannabis Committee, would you entertain working with the CAO on a host agreement, CAO and legal counsel?
Yep, for both of them.
Sure.
Alright.
I will let you know, I believe that the 11th, I don't think I can actually make that hearing though.
Okay, then.
I'll be out of town on business.
Well, the host agreement is a separate process.
Understood, but I probably would, I'd like to observe this process anyway. But yes, absolutely.
Can we make sure that meeting is taped, particularly that, in all notes?
They do a good job of that.
Oh, they do do a good job. Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Sure, I asked what the date was. I know what I got.
11. 7.
Yeah, 10.
7:30.
Thank you, sir.
Kevin, you'll have representation there, right?
I'm gonna show you.
Okay. Okay. A4 is a letter from Fiori Realty Holdings LLC, 104 Feeding Hills Road, Southwick, Mass. Richard E. Fiori Jr. And this is to the Planning Board. It's a copy of the development that would be on the west side of the former Southwick Country Club. And they submitted a drawing. Did you get a copy, Doug? Okay. Here, Doug's, I'm gonna refer to Doug if there's any questions or concerns about.
Your reply to approve the name.
Yeah, the name is, it's an exclusive right of the Board of Selectmen. It's one of the few things that, in our, in our bylaws, like if you look under Board of Selectmen, naming of streets is.
Okay.
They're changing names.
Alright, and they would like the, the street that'll be servicing those homes, and it looks like, did I count right, 25 parcels?
Yeah, something like that.
Okay.
And it looks like it's been, the name is okay in terms of the Fire Department and the Police Department.
Have signed off on it.
Yeah, have emailed.
And it's Saw Grass Lane. S-A-W-G-R-A-S-S Lane. And Carl said, police and fire are happy with that because of our enhanced 911. We don't wanna be renaming anymore streets.
Right. And that meeting is coming up on the 26th.
Okay.
There's a meeting for this or that other?
Yeah, the rename.
So do you need a motion to officially name the street Saw Grass?
Yep.
Lane. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. We'll sign it.
If we had gotten that ladder truck, we'd have a different idea there, right?
I know it.
Yeah, it might be a different name.
It'd be Russell Lee Anderson Way. Alright. A5 is concerning salt. In essence, we got Randy here, so we can go over this. But it looks like we got very good.
Gonna fill it up for the winter, and this is the amount you need to do your debt, a lot less than last year cause they, they had some left over from last year.
Right.
So you need to authorize the, the spending of the $45,600 for salt for fiscal '19 salt budget.
So deficit spending?
Yeah.
Okay. And we have the right to do that because of winter roads, by statute. Really quickly, it looks like last year we paid $88.21 a ton. The current pricing now is $70.20 a ton, so that's a, a nice reduction. And Randy, just a quick question. What did we use for salt last year?
We used about 2,000 tons the last, each of the last two years, about 2,000 tons.
Okay. And, and this, this will, this $45,600 deficit spending would fill the salt check?
$2,600 ton, yes.
Okay, so we'd have ample in case we had a very bad winter.
We hope so.
Okay.
Never know what nature throws at us, but.
That's right. I mean, after last year, nothing would surprise me. Mr. Moglen, any questions?
Nope.
Okay. I need a motion.
Motion to deficit spend $45,600 for salt.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. We'll sign it. A6 is what the CAO has been working on, Designer Services Request for Qualifications, Town of Southwick. This is to look at all five town buildings that the CAO has pointed out to us time and time again are getting older, and we need to have somebody review our roofs and our.
Yep, a team of department heads and myself met with Jim Maisick, developed an RFQ, and it was released this week.
Okay. And it looks like there's going to be a tour of the buildings, 1:00 PM on Wednesday, September 12th, 2018, starting here at Town Hall. You and Bobby and.
Yep. And then they'll, the vendors or whoever's with us, the designers, will then go from location to location.
Okay. And then completed responses are to be submitted no later than 1:00 PM Thursday, September 20th, 2018, at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, 60 Congress Street, First Fuller Springfield, Massachusetts. So we've begun a process that's going to really, gonna be two to three years before we actually.
Jim will be reviewing them with us. We'll narrow them down probably to the top three candidates, and then we'll, we'll interview them.
Right. So it's, it's nothing we're gonna do overnight, but it's the beginning of a process of making sure our buildings are kept sound. A7 is an incident thing. Southwick Police Department, Reporting Officer Sergeant Paul Miles, Approving Officer Lieutenant Robert Landis. It's concerning a, I guess it's a violation of a Class II license, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
And at the former Gaunt's Performance and Automotive at 642 College Highway.
Right, they're, they're not really physically there, but our understanding is they may be off at auctions.
No, I fully understand. The place is locked up, telling them anything, and they've moved on.
Yeah.
But the report is that they're using their license without right. And what does that mean?
So the Board needs to authorize us to notify them to call a hearing so that you can have a hearing to revoke the license. Or they can surrender it. We've done that before too. We've given people an opportunity to surrender licenses without going through the procedural steps.
If they surrender the license, license is still with the property? If the owner of the property renews it, is that what?
Well, licenses are issued, the property owner still has the ability to go ahead and have another licensee be assigned there.
Okay.
They don't lose that right.
Okay.
Because we've had people try to turn in licenses because they had a disagreement with their landlords. And the Board, through its regulations, has made sure that a licensee can't do that to a landlord.
Okay.
It's gotta be up to the landlord.
Okay. Full disclosure, happen to be a neighbor. The Gaunts are, I think, very nice people. So I'd like to, you know, approach it, you know, in a friendly manner, you know, and see if we can't get people to surrender the license, you know, so that we don't have to take any official action.
Right.
And if we need be, I guess we're gonna take official action.
Sounds reasonable.
Alright.
So step one is the offer for surrender.
Right.
Then the second step.
Would be to hold the hearing.
Yep.
But I think if somebody reaches out to them, I think we can probably clear up the situation.
I mean, they, they expire anyway in December.
Right. Right. So. Alright, A8 is from DPW Director Randy Brown. This is concerning a seasonal employment recommendation. Appears there, there is a program, a University of Massachusetts Community Works Program that assists unemployed individuals and they pay the, or reimburse the town for wages for up to four weeks. Randy, wanna give us the short on this one?
Yeah, I was, I was contacted by an individual from the Community Works Program, maybe a couple of months ago. And as a program, as you noted, it's for help, it's, it's just unemployed individuals finding positions. They sent us a couple of resumes. Chris and I met with one individual. We thought it'd be a good fit. I don't think there's a lot of risk involved. They're paying us hourly for it on month. Individual would like to move into a full-time position, but he's aware that this is only temporary, similar to our summer help that we hire every year to work with our, with our crews. So I think, I think there's plenty of work for, for us to do, and I think we could get him busy for a year, for, for a few weeks.
Yep.
And maybe this'll help him transition, transition to a future position somewhere here, maybe somewhere else in the public, in the public works field.
If we looked into like query checks and physicals and stuff like that, or?
I haven't gone through that. I don't know if this, this program does that in advance. I could check with them on that. I know we do that for our own employees.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, do, how about for our summer help? Do we do query checks and physicals for the summer help?
I think Cindy does. We do it for lifeguards and council on aging, Park and Rec. Some classifications you don't have to, some you absolutely have to do it for.
Okay.
But the Board would have to authorize the Acting Chairman to sign the second page, cause, you know, for the grant agreement. Then the other details can be worked out.
Okay, so do we need a motion for the Acting Chairman to sign?
Yep, that would be the contract.
And that we would, before anything was done, we'd follow up, make sure our query checks and physicals, all that stuff, so that there's no liability issues for the town? Is that agreeable?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you said I'm signing here, Carl?
Yeah, right here. Yep. Right where's the contractor? Right there. See where the, the square box, it says signature?
Right up.
We'll print your name right here, Russ. You gotta sign right there, cause we're the contractor. We'll print your name there.
Oh, I'm on the wrong page. That helps. Okay.
You got it?
Yep, got it. Alright, A9 is another one from DPW Director Randy Brown. It's Stormwater Agreements. It's a, looking to be part of a group, and it looks like it's a price of, I saw the price here somewhere.
$33.64.
Okay.
That'd be our share.
Right. And dues of $2,000?
Just two separate items.
Two separate items. Okay. Go ahead, Randy.
So the first item is the Candy Club Stormwater Committee. This is a group that I've been participating in for several years now.
Yep.
So we're a group of about 20 communities that meet every quarter and discuss stormwater issues. As you were aware, this permit, that's now in effect. That's a big focus of our conversation. But at these meetings, we're able to collaborate, share ideas, share information. And we do get, I do get a lot of benefits out of that. In order to continue with that, with that program, there is an annual membership fee of $2,000. And then the second item is the stormwater mapping efforts that we completed a few months ago. This requires some annual maintenance and hosting of the, the stormwater data that was collected through that program. And there's a group of seven communities that participated in that effort. And we are looking to have Pioneer Valley Planning host and oversee that, that data for us. And there is an annual fee for that of $33.64.
Okay.
We do have prior year funds that were set aside a few years ago, specific for the Amazon format that we can utilize for both of these classes.
Okay. Any questions, Doug?
Does the data that, the mapping part go with our existing?
Software?
Yeah, what's the name of it?
R-G-I-S or?
G-I-S.
It is, it is all in our G-I-S.
It's in our G-I-S.
So this'll update what we already have on there?
Yes. Yeah. So there is the, the Assessors Department coordinates that effort through one of our consulting firms.
Cartographics, yeah.
But we do have stormwater data on that in that mapping system. They just kinda keep it for us. What we'll do is we'll update, this, this mapping is much more up to date than what they have, so we'll make sure that, that mapping is up to date, so.
But they'll be correlated at some point?
Well, they'll do it manually, or we'll, we'll be coordinating that between the two. But it'll be probably, you know, five yearly or yearly updates.
So you got two documents you gotta sign.
Yeah. As an aside, the, the summer intern that you had, or I shouldn't say intern, the summer gentleman that was going to.
College student that just finished?
Chris Fontaine, yep.
Yeah. How'd that work out?
Oh, great. He's a great kid and real, real knowledgeable. Just kinda dug right in and did his job. What he was helping us do was we updated our stormwater mapping.
Okay.
So the programs that we have through this pro, through this Pioneer Valley Planning, there was a map, that was a base map, and he was out there collecting data, updating the information. So the map is now more accurate than it was before.
Was he, he was taking GPS coordinates of outfalls and things like that?
Yeah, exactly. Taking pictures. And so that, that map really is the backbone of this, this permit. So once we get the mapping complete, then we can branch out to identify other issues that are, that will be addressed to the permit.
Okay. I need a motion then for, first for the $2,000, and then another motion, I guess, or a combined motion for the additional $3,364.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
There's two places for you to sign.
Yeah, I, I, I cheated. I cheated. I signed already. Alright, the next is A10. It's the 40th MMA Annual Meeting and Trade Show, January 18th and 19th, 2019, Heinz Convention Center and Sheridan Boston Hotel. And this is something that we attend in some conferences.
A lot of conferences, training sessions.
Right. Randy's been, I mean, and we tried to encourage a Planning Board member to go, I think. And, and there's, besides the trade show, the seminars and the information you pick up from other.
Finance Committee goes.
Right. Elected official and appointed officials is great. Also, we get credit on our insurance for FUMIA for some of the courses. So in essence, it helps pay for, or defray some of the cost of people going there. So it is not a junket. It's not just fun and games. We do actually meet. It is, it's their long days.
It's grueling, yeah.
It is long days.
One of them, any day around here even, yeah. So the booklets.
Well, you said that. That's Steinhardt, S-T-E-I-N.
In, in the next month or two.
Alright. And what we should try to do is try to nail down who thinks they're going to make the, Robin always says a great job making our reservations so that we, we get good hotel rooms. Alright, 11, well, it says 9A, but I guess it's A11.
Well, we tabled it, you spoke to the Council on Aging.
Alright. I did. I asked for this to be tabled. And I did speak with the Council on Aging Director concerning it. And my concern was that we have kind of a gentleman's agreement with the Finance Committee about creating positions with benefits. So I did share my concern with the Council on Aging Director. This is a grant-funded position, even.
Multi-year.
Right. So, and the person is well aware, if the funding goes away, the position goes away. And we did discuss the possibilities of kinda working into it, you know? If you don't need the person for all 23 hours, then you don't use them for all 23 hours.
Correct.
And that we would.
Take a temp, a vote to make the person temporarily increase the.
Right. And that, it would be, just run out on the.
The funding.
The funding. The date of the funding. So that would be the motion I'd be looking for.
I will make that.
I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll sign that. But the Council on Aging Director has told me that they. But the council on agent director has told me that they, you know, are expanding and, uh, the extra hours are certainly needed. And, uh, that will be something that we can address during the budget, uh, season with the finance committee. Uh, A twelve is, uh, apparently a notice that, uh, that, uh, they are going to, the Franklin Land Trust will be doing a tour of North Pond on nine eighteen at five fifteen at Bob's Boat. So I don't know if Bob's Boat can handle a lot of people, and I don't even know who Bob is, but, uh, they will be doing that. But they will be having Franklin Land Trust will lead a North Pond Walk, um, on ten-nine at four P M., that'd be October ninth at four P M., and that looks like it's a Tuesday?
It is a Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday. So, if we, uh, it looks like they C C'd quite a few people, um, I, I imagine, uh, community preservation is where, where this, and, uh, maybe conservation, park and rec, uh, I don't know, who else, uh?
The press.
The press?
Right.
Okay, if, maybe we could do a, get a little more detail for this, so it's, the press understands it? Right, and where they're meeting, things like that, so that, and where to park?
Possibly.
Okay, well, yeah.
I mean, I've heard of Bob's Burgers, but I don't know.
All right, so we, we can find out that information and do a, a better press release. A thirteenth is a, uh, sponsor request for the annual Southwick Police Association Golf Tournament, which is going to be, this year, it's going to be-
Usually Columbus Day.
Columbus Day weekend.
Yeah, it's usually Columbus Day.
That's Columbus Day, that is, it's early this year.
Okay, Monday, October eighth, uh, if you wanna play golf, uh, starting at eleven A M., registration nine to eleven. Uh, if you just wanna go for dinner, you can just go for dinner, uh, it's a good cause. And we normally make a donation out of our gift account.
Yep.
And, uh, I guess I'd accept the motion to make the same amount.
That's what I was, my next question, what did we do?
I don't know, that's why I said the same amount.
One hundred dollar sponsorship, one hundred dollar sponsorship before we make it.
Well, then I'll make that motion for one hundred dollars. Yeah, strike that ten thousand.
Yes, sir.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
A fourteen is, uh, the host agreement, and this for Senior Service of America, and this is something we do with the City of Springfield Department of Elders.
Right.
And that-
Comes through that age.
Young lady, uh, works down in the, uh, senior center, and she does a great job. So this is a, a great program.
So you're gonna be signing here, 'cause they did put in, so you're gonna sign right down there.
Underneath there, so I need a motion for the acting chair to sign so that we can keep, uh, that program alive in the Town of Southwick.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. A fifteen is, uh, the select board goals as of June fourth, two thousand and eighteen, I thought, I thought we just redid this a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, that's the edits.
Okay.
Just for you to have.
Okay, so it, shouldn't we change that date to our last meeting, which was?
Yep, I will do that, I was on vacation.
All right, so it was August twenty-seventh, is that right?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
I'd like to add one more item.
You got it, bring it up.
Item number twenty should be the Suffield M O A regarding the L P P.
Suffield, I'm sorry, Doug?
M O A.
M O A. All right.
And I do believe at some point, um, Town Council was gonna be reaching out to Council for Suffield.
Okay, we're gonna, A, A sixteen is still in review, still working on it. So we've gone through the action folder, and now we are on to old business. Do we have any old business? C A O?
Uh, the library carpet job, um, they have contracts in the process of being signed by Joe, and they'll be doing the work in, in early October.
Okay. Doug?
Oh, sir.
Okay, I did see that we are working on the sidewalks on Depot Street. Randy, go ahead, anything you can tell us?
Uh, they poured concrete today, so, uh, it's kinda cured for a day or two, then we can open it up to the public.
Okay, um, is there any chance, now, did the Commonwealth Mass pay for part of that, is that, no?
No, it was a, there was a Bay State Rose, is a program that's, um, aimed for highway, uh, highway departments.
So it was like a training?
It was a training class that we hosted today.
Okay.
So there were other town departments that came here, they were training upstairs for an hour or so. And they went outside and each of them, they helped pour the, the concrete.
Okay.
So we had to pay for the prep work, we had to pay for the form work.
Yep.
But Bay State Rose paid for the concrete, and the labor was free, 'cause it was all, all, you know, through the workers today. So there was still a cost to the town.
Yeah, right, but, okay, but we did save a little money that we had budgeted?
We had, there was ten thousand set aside, I haven't got the bill yet, but yeah, we did save a little bit of money, um, to that effort.
Okay, i- is there any possibility, Randy, that we can do some additional repair work on the, uh, the asphalt, uh, paving, pavement or sidewalks between what we now poured in the, the poured, uh, sidewalks up at, uh, Trails End?
Mm-hmm, we originally funded, they, they might funding for it.
Okay.
That's the hurdle.
Right.
Um, Carl mentioned today that you were looking to do more than what we had done, might have seen it, was that was just that section there.
Yeah.
Um, and we, we obviously come down the funding.
So what we're looking at is-
I put aside ask funds in the budget process, but I would grant it. So Carl mentioned there may be more money left over from the paving project.
Yep.
Those other paving projects the board had done?
Yeah.
Randy's reconciling the bills, so whatever's left over, he's gonna get quotes on to extend that line of your feet toward Trails End.
Oh, super.
So I need to talk with our local contractor to get some pricing, uh, to extend a couple of options. We wanna go just in front of the Malone property.
Yeah.
Which is about four hundred feet.
Yeah.
And the next option would be to extend it all the way to the rail trail, or not the rail trail, the rail, the-
Rails End, all right.
Did you ever see our local contractor around? I think they're out building, they're out building a subdivision, they're too big for us now.
Vacation.
They're too big for us now.
Up the country.
Marcus, what do you think of the sidewalk in front of your house, since you live right there?
Oh, it's wonderful.
Okay.
No, a lot of people use it, folks going down to the rail trail.
Yeah.
I know as the, uh, Southwick development, Southwick Greens was approved, there was a condition in there, because sidewalk is on one side of the street, was allowed by the planning board, the, uh, there'll be a amount of money deposited into the, uh-
Sidewalk account?
Sidewalk revolving account.
But that'll be a while.
But that hasn't been determined yet, but it could maybe hopefully by next year.
Yeah, I think we're gonna, he's gonna have, we're gonna have the answers a lot sooner to, to maybe take care of this sooner.
Well, hopefully-
You did vote on it at your last meeting.
Yeah, hopefully, uh, if we can, uh, you know, obviously, you know what I'm thinking about, being on the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary committee, and trying to knock off as many projects as we can so that we are set for twenty-twenty. And that'd be a great connection, uh, to the downtown area, uh, and I'd like to, I'd actually like to see the school working more on the, uh, safe routes to school, you know, and-
I know, it is on the left.
And the extension of sidewalks on powder mill and things like that, but, you know, it's a wish list.
Right, but that, that sidewalk bank's gonna help, the timing's not perfect.
Right.
But at least it's there now, so, 'cause it's, there's-
There's plenty of sections of sidewalk that need to be moved.
Plenty of linear feet of sidewalk that got waved, so-
Going up Daniel Road needs to be done.
Yeah.
And there was, uh, an amount set aside, I think it was forty-one thousand or something, for a noble steed. But that was a condition in the approval of that subdivision, however, there was no revolving account in place at that time. So that condition is still there, but I don't know legally whether or not those funds could be expected.
'Cause it predates the approval of the fund and the establishment.
But that, it would be useful to explore somehow if that money could-
Well, I'm sure a request from the planning board could come to have Mark Begley look at that precise question.
As vice chairman, could you take care of that, Marcus?
Sure.
Okay, that way, if, if something in writing comes through, it, it makes it a lot easier. All right, uh, other old business, all right, we're going to new business, new business? Okay, uh, I had, uh, one thing under new business, um, I just got the V F W., I just dropped off a poster, uh, for their annual spaghetti fundraiser to benefit the Southwick K nine program. It's gonna be Saturday, October sixth, four-thirty P M. to seven P M. at the V F W. Uh, they're asking people to come and support, uh, the K nine program, and hopefully come and meet, uh, Southwick K nine, new, uh, K nine, uh, new K nine general and handler, uh, Officer Mike Westcott. Uh, and they think there might be a small demonstration will take place at the dinner. Uh, the demonstration, of course, will be canceled for police emergency.
I nominate the chair for the demo.
Mr. Diddy, absolutely.
Now he's not here, absolutely.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. If you want to tell Officer Westcott that Mr. Diddy has volunteered to be-
We just put a steak in his pocket.
With soup or without soup?
Oh, no soup. Can we, uh, October sixth, four-thirty P M. to seven P M., can we send this, uh, 'cause each year they ask me to contact Senator Humison and Representative Baldiga, uh, is there some way we could email this to both of them? And to make sure that they're aware that they are-
Robin can also walk it up to the state rep's office.
Right, uh, that they are invited guest of the V F W. for that event. Okay, the only other thing under new business, or maybe could've counted under old business, and since Randy's here, I'll ask Randy. Um, one of my pet peeves, the, uh, rail trail, uh, at the, uh, Route fifty-seven where people cross, on the, uh, left-hand side as you're headed towards Springfield. It's, 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 you know, normally we do a, a pretty good job, but I think because of the warm weather and all the rain we had, things are growing so quickly, there's really a blind area there where somebody coming over that hill can't see a kid. Uh, is it possible that we can get our guys down there to, uh, do some additional mowing and weed whacking?
Yeah, sure, I know we're formal working out for a little bit, so we can-
Yeah, it's, 'cause I had, I had somebody call me today, a little kid-
Eastbound or westbound?
As you're heading towards Springfield on the left-hand side, you know, people coming across, you know, that grows up there in our right-of-way, so they, I don't think the rail trail people mow it, I think usually our D P W. guys, when they're doing the sides of roads, mow it. And we've mowed it in the past, and, uh, it opens up the visibility there, we don't wanna, 'cause you can't see kids, you just can't see them. So, thank you, Randy. Uh, any other new business? I don't see any need for executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So, but we have a question, go ahead, John.
I would like to invite anybody from the town, uh, this Saturday at the Greens, we're having, uh, like an open house to go over any questions or anything down the new development, it's for real estate, but anybody, uh, any town officials, if they wanna go, they could stop by.
You got it, we did announce it, John, we, uh-
Earlier in the meeting.
Early in the meeting, somebody gave us the, uh, an invitation-
Oh, sorry.
From the Chamber of Commerce, so, uh, Kate Feenland, so we did announce it, so thank you. Uh, now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Very expedient, Mr. Acting Chairman, very expedient.